All right, I'd like to call the, I forget what today's date is, the June 21st, 2018, Howell Township Planning Board meeting to order. Eileen, opening statement, please.
I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open. Adequate notice haven't been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 19th, 2018, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Star Ledger and the Tri-Town News. Second, on January 19th, 2018, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 19th, 2018, said notice was posted in the office of the planning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the fire prevention code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Thank you, Eileen. Call the roll, please.
Former Mayor Gatto, I have not heard from. Mr. Husser has been excused. Chief Kudrick?
Present.
Mr. Russo?
Here.
Mr. Schneider has been excused. Mr. Tannenhaus?
Here.
Mr. Boyle has been excused. Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro has been excused, and Mayor Berger has been excused. Chairman Nash?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. I ask if everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll have a moment of silence for our first responders.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're just gonna do a couple of housekeeping here for a couple of minutes. Next up is approval of minutes. So we have the regular meeting of April 19th, 2018. Eligible voters are Chief Kudrick, Mr. Russo, Mr. Seaman, and Mr. Tannenhaus. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the minutes from April 19th.
I'll second it.
Call the roll, please.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhaus?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is regular meeting minutes of May 10th, 2018. Have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve the minutes for May 10th, 2018.
I will second.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhaus?
Yes.
And Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Next up is the meeting minutes for the regular meeting of June 7th, 2018. Eligible voters, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Russo, Mr. Tannenhaus, Mr. Seaman, and myself. Can I have a motion, please?
Right.
I'll make a motion to accept the June 7th minute meeting minutes.
You sound like me.
I second that.
Thank you. Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhaus?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is resolutions. First one is case number SP-941A, Walmart Real Estate Business Trust, resolution granting submission waivers. Eligible voters, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Russo, Mr. Tannenhaus, Mr. Seaman, and myself. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve case, the resolutions for case number SP-941A. I'll second.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhaus?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Next up is case number SD-2984, Lanes Pond Developers LLC, resolution granting submission waivers. Eligible voters, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Russo, Mr. Tannenhaus, Mr. Seaman, and myself. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for case number SP-1015A.
Have a second.
No, excuse me, it's 2984.
2984.
I got ahead of myself, sorry. 2984.
Hey, no, I'm sorry, it's 2984.
SD-2984.
Yeah.
I'll second it.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhaus?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
And Chairman Nash?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. The next one, case number SP-1015A, we're going to hold because right now we only have one eligible member to vote, and we don't have anyone to second it, so we'll carry that to the next meeting. Next one is case number SP-960R, United Advertising Corporation, resolution granting preliminary and final site plan and conditional use. Eligible voters, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Russo, Mr. Seaman, and Mr. Tannenhaus.
Mr. Chair, I'd like for that one to be carried two weeks. I've had some conversations with the applicant's attorney. He wants some revisions on a specific issue that I don't think they specifically testified to during the hearing, so we're just revising some of the, talking about revising some of the language right now.
Okay, very good, so we'll carry that to the next meeting also. Thank you, counsel. Next up is ordinance 018-5 and 018-6, resolution for review of proposed ordinances O-18-5 and O-18-6. Eligible voters, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Seaman, and Mr. Tannenhaus. Gentlemen, motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for ordinance 0-18-5 and 0-18-6.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Tannenhaus?
Yes.
And Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized, thank you. Before we go further, can we do correspondence?
Oh, we have correspondence?
Yes.
Okay.
First thing I have is an email from Sal Alfieri. He's the attorney for case number SP-1027, 41 Randolph LLC. He has asked that that application be carried to the July 19th meeting, and he's good on time, so I told him it wouldn't be a problem. He asked if it could be carried with no further notice.
Okay. Counselor, you want to make the official announcement?
Sure. Case number SP-1027/41Randolph-LLC will be carried to the Board's July 19th, 2018 meeting, beginning 7:00 here in the council chambers at Town Hall. There'll be no further notice to property owners, and all documents are on file in Eileen's office if anyone would like to come during normal business hours to review them.
Thank you.
The next is an email I received from Lawrence Latrell. He is the attorney for case number SD-2978, Edward &amp; Lord's McNamee. He said that his engineer had a conflict tonight with a previously scheduled meeting, and he would ask that we also carry this one to July 19th, and he has granted the Board an extension through that day.
Okay, so case number SD-2978, Edward &amp; Lordis McNamee, will be carried to the Board's July 19th, 2018 meeting, beginning 7:00 here in the council chambers. There'll be no further notice to property owners. All documents are on file in Eileen's office, although you may want to keep checking. I think there may be some supplemental submissions that come in.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And the last item is an email, and I've sent a couple of updates. There is stormwater management training that has to be done by all board members and council members by July the 1st, and everybody that takes the training has to send me an email with the date they took the training because we have to keep a list in our stormwater pollution prevention plan. So please, if you haven't done it, do so as soon as possible, and send an email to me with the date of your training. If you have done it and haven't sent me an email, please do that as well. Thank you.
It's just a video that you watch on the...
It's about 45 minutes.
Yeah.
So can I ask the Board, has anyone here tried to open up that link?
Did the link directly? No, I've had to go actually to the website and find it through the website.
Well, off the DEP website.
Yeah, I started the, I've got about five or 10 minutes into the...
If you actually type it in, though, it does work.
Because it's telling me it can't find the extension SWF.
Maybe do before the SWF, like only go to, I'll tell you what it is.
All right.
I'll have it here somewhere.
Maybe the DEP just wants you off the board.
It's possible.
Maybe only go to www新Jerseystormwater.org, and then look for training, or try video, because I've tried it, and it works the link or if I type it in, so I don't know.
Really? Off the Windows, right? Because I have the latest Windows.
Well, I go through Internet Explorer for everything. I don't use Edge, so that could be an issue, so...
Oh, okay. All right, I'll try that. All right. The next thing, before we get to the applications, we've got a couple of meetings that are up in, for July and August, and I've talked it over with Mr. Tannenhaus. I would like to see if we could cut it down to one meeting on each month, and I was thinking that we could, for July, which one did we say we were gonna?
July, we only advertise for one meeting. That's always our summer schedule, but August, we have two.
Mr. Chairman, maybe if I could just suggest this, rather than canceling the meeting, there may be some emergency that arises that we might still need a date, and if we cancel it, we'd have to notice it as a special meeting.
Okay.
We can cancel them, but maybe, you know, closer to the date, you know, and that way we don't lose the night.
All right, so with that being said, I would like to ask the Board if we have any problems of not scheduling a meeting for August, or not putting anything on the agenda for August 16th.
I won't be here anyway, so it's fine.
You won't be here?
I won't, I will not be here.
So we're already down three members, so...
And Brian and I, so...
That's what I mean, you three, so...
So please, let's not schedule anything for that particular meeting.
I won't unless it's an emergency, so...
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. With that being done...
That's all I have.
Thank you. So we will go to the applications before the Board, and our big agenda is down to case number SP-941A, Walmart Real Estate Business Trust, and we have a minor site plan and sign variance. Application of Walmart Real Estate Business Trust as applicant and owner seeking minor site plan and sign variance to replace four existing building-mounted signs and erect two additional building-mounted signs along Route 9 facing facade on premises known as Block 74, Lot 9.02, US Route 9 South, at the intersection of Lanes Mill Road and Kent Road. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, board members, for coming out here on this summer evening. My name is Keith Lockland. I'm from the law firm Genova Burns, and I'm here on behalf of applicant Walmart Real Estate Business Trust. We are seeking amended preliminary and final site plan approval with signed variation to update our signage consistent with corporate policy and to keep our store attractive and relevant to our customers. Specifically, we are seeking a variation from Section 188-231C and 256-5C of the township's land use ordinance, which provides that businesses situated on a corner location shall be permitted to have two wall façade-type signs, provided that both such signs not face on the same street, and the applicant proposes six wall signs along the Route 9 facing facade of the building. Notice was published in the June 11th, 2018 edition of the Star Ledger and was mailed to all property owners located within 200 feet of the subject property. An affidavit of proof of service and publication was previously provided to the township's planning and zoning officer. Tonight, you will hear from two witnesses, including Jim Higgins from MMA Architects, who will testify as to the specifics of the proposed signage plan, as well as Christine Nazaro-Cafone from Cafone Consulting Group, our professional planner, who will testify as to the planning justification from our variation requests. In addition, we have an engineer who's available to answer any questions that the Board may have or the Board professionals, but we don't plan on having him testify for the sake of brevity. With that, if it's okay with the Board, I'd like to call my first witness. My first witness is Jim Higgins from MMA Architects.
Okay, Mr. Higgins, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this Board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Please state and spell your name for the record.
James Higgins. I'm a multi-media architect.
You can sit down and just get closer to the mic.
Yeah, we...
That's a mic right there on the table, so you can sit...
That horizontal bar on the table is a mic.
You can sit, just pull it closer to you if you want.
Yeah. Okay, and who are you employed by, Mr. Higgins?
I apologize. I just want to preface by saying that I'm a little hard to hear, so please be...
Not a problem.
And so my name is James Higgins, MMA Architectural and Multimedia Architecture.
Okay, Mr. Lockland, you want to just qualify?
Sure, absolutely. Mr. Higgins, can you give the Board the benefit of your educational professional background, please?
Surely. I'm a registered architect in the state of New Jersey. I've been registered for approximately 35 years. My educational background is in architecture. As my bachelor of architecture, I graduated from Syracuse University in 1977. I've appeared at numerous other planning board meetings, and I've been with MMA for 18 years.
And he has testified on applications of similar nature?
Yes, I have. I've testified for other municipalities with regards to signage and building-related items.
And your license is current with the New Jersey Professional Board?
No, not with, as a registered architect, yes. I'm not a professional planner. I am a registered architect in the state of New Jersey.
All right, we'll accept his qualifications with respect to architecture.
Thank you, and we also have a planner who will be testifying next.
Understood.
Thank you. Mr. Higgins, could you describe to us what the proposed signage plan is, and then, if you could, just briefly go into detail, what's the existing signage on the site?
Surely. Is it possible for me to...
Sure, of course.
I also...
So if we're gonna do that, we need to have him speak to a microphone. We have a portable microphone, or if you want to switch, however you want it, but I need to have a...
I think he just wants to come up to the podium.
I think we were gonna switch, and he'll use this microphone if that's okay.
That's fine.
Okay.
Just, we gotta get it picked up on the mics.
Understood.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So the nature of signs that are going to be installed on the Walmart front facade, this is a, this is a general site plan?
Was this previously submitted to the Board?
This is a general site plan.
This was submitted with our application.
So this is the plenary final site plan dated 2/28/18?
It's due.
Okay, okay, all right, go ahead.
Brian, do we want to mark this?
It's already been marked. It's A3 on our exhibit list.
So the site plan generally shows the location of the Walmart store, the front facade, and indicates the location for the proposed signage at the front facade of the building. I can, will go into a little bit more specifics with regards to the location of the sign. Basically, the signs, as proposed, are all new signs, and they're a combination of the changing of existing signs with signs that are the same and in the same location. There will be new signs that are placed that replace existing signs at the front elevation, and then there are new signs proposed that do not currently exist on the front elevation.
So, Mr. Higgins, why don't we just go through, what are the signs that are being replaced?
Okay.
All right, so we'll mark this as A5, and this is a sheet with, what is this, colored photographs?
This is here.
And that's that? Is that the sign plan?
Yeah, right here.
Okay, so we've already marked that as A4?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Do we, do we have copies of that for the Board?
You do, it's attached to yours.
It was submitted with a...
Okay.
Oh, okay.
We got it, we got it.
Can you guys all see this from here, or do you want me to?
No, it's fine, I'm good.
They have their own copy.
So just list the signs first that are being replaced.
So the main, the main store sign, the Walmart main store sign, is being replaced with a new sign that is of the same size and same square footage. The home pharmacy, which is directly over the left entry vestibule, is being replaced with a new sign of the same size and location.
Okay.
The existing market sign, which is over the right entry vestibule, is being replaced with a new sign, different language, being replaced to show grocery. It's being replaced from market to grocery. The existing outdoor living...
Well, is the, is the size of the sign gonna remain the same? Instead of market, it's just gonna say grocery now?
Actually, the sign is increasing in size. The market sign is 28.17 square feet. The new grocery sign is 42.05 square feet.
Okay.
The outdoor living sign is being replaced with a new lawn and garden sign, and that sign is actually smaller in size. The existing sign is 77.17 square feet. The new lawn and garden sign is 63.89 square feet.
Okay. So those are all the replacements, then?
I'm sorry?
Is that all the replacements, or there are more?
Those are all the replacements.
Okay, so then there's two new signs?
There are two new signs.
Okay, so let's hear that.
The new sign is the Vision Center sign, which is next to the home and pharmacy, and the pickup with spark sign at the right side of the front elevation.
Where's the, where's the Vision sign?
Up next to home and, very small, home and pharmacy up top.
It's to the right of the home and pharmacy.
Keep going.
I thought the home and pharmacy is...
On the new one.
Oh, I see.
Barely see it.
Oh, I see it. Okay.
Okay. Maybe you want to make it bigger.
Now... Yeah, exactly. To make you think you have that on sight.
Right? If you can't see the sign, come to the Vision Center.
So how do they use a Vision Center sign?
With respect to the two new signs that are being installed on the front elevation, the new Vision sign is directional in nature. It basically directs the customers to use the left entry vestibule. The Vision Center is basically located just inside the store at the right, so it acts as a directional sign. The new pickup sign, which is located at the far side of the front elevation, is a general informational sign. Now, this sign basically informs the customer of the service offered by Walmart, reinforcing the ability to pick up items that they have ordered online. Now, the reason for that sign helps to benefit the customer in the following categories. It offers convenience to the customers. It assists in the speed of purchasing pre-ordered commodities, and it saves time for the customers with regards to the shopping. And it is a linking of the technology of the online purchasing shopping experience. This is truly a, helping to benefit the community and is in the community's interest with regards to their shopping for items online, and offering that convenience and speed of purchase. I might also say that the pickup sign is a continuation of the overall signage philosophy that Walmart has on all of their stores by maintaining both the quality and the appearance of those signs in the interest of not only the consumer, but in the interest of the community as well.
Mr. Higgins, if I could, if I'm looking at this, the pickup is above what appears to be, from a, from a visual aspect, a, an entrance, a roll-up type of door, and if I saw that, I would naturally gravitate to that area, to expecting some type of area where I could pick up my pre-ordered merchandise. Is that, in fact, what happens there, or does the person still have to go into the store?
Actually, the person still has to enter the store in order to pick up their commodities. There is, the location of the pickup sign is relatively in the same vicinity, meaning to say it's on the right side, the right elevation, or the right entry vestibule, is actually the location where, once the customers arrive into the store, there is an area for register and aisles for them to pick up the commodities that they've ordered online. So to answer your question, the customer would still have to enter the store through the vestibule in order to finalize their purchase.
So what is the purpose of the pickup sign in that particular location?
It's normally a location that they would like it, that Walmart chooses, it's a, has a higher visibility.
No, I'm saying, though, if I gotta go into, I gotta go into the store to get my commodity, whatever that is, and if I'm in the store, I'm picking up my commodity in the store, and I'm leaving, right? And then I'm done.
Correct. That's correct.
So I think the chairman's question was, it looks like this is, like, it looks, you know, in this rendering, like the pickup is over, like a loading dock, so there's nothing to, there's no commerce happening at this location, right?
I think he was saying that that's where, if I may, where they, he wants the, where Walmart wants the customers to enter, because it's a big store, obviously, so...
Well, they're not entering through here, right?
They're not entering in that area that's directly below.
Right, correct, but they want, but that's in the vicinity of it, so if the sign has to go somewhere, we want it to be as close as possible to where it is. And then go somewhere, so that was the thing.
So would it, would it be possible to, I understand the philosophy of the sign, would it be possible to do something with that, with the facade, to eliminate that visual perception that the sign is right over an entryway or where I have to go to pick up the merchandise? I don't want some, I don't want people parking at that end of the parking lot expecting they're gonna walk into that area, or be close proximity to the pickup point.
Well, Mr. Chairman, can I just?
Yeah, sure.
There's no door there.
I understand.
So I don't, I mean, I don't know, I mean, it's pretty obvious to me, if I'm going up there, I'm parking my car on this side, I'm, I would assume... up there, I'm parking my car on this side, I would assume that I would, you know, the pickup area is in that area, right? So, the way I'm looking at this, I think it's page two, you park by the pickup sign around the bend, right, is the door. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
How far away is that?
Again, just bear in mind that the location of that pickup sign, there's no man door that's within near proximity of that sign, other than the entry vestibule to the far right. So-
Because I get what the chairman's saying, you know? You don't want people to go over there expecting to pick something up and then ending up in a weird kind of, you know, a way where you can't even get into the store. But if the door is around the bend, immediately around the bend, because I'm looking at the picture dead-on with the pickup sign in front of me.
Sure.
Is the store, is the door to the immediate right around the bend?
It's on this, it's on this photo right here where it's at.
It's the main entrance to Walmart is where it's at.
Okay.
Really pretty far away.
Well, there's no, there's no immediate door. There is a door, it's really kind of-
Okay.
For the grocery or for the market.
Right, right, right. So, you would enter from, in the grocery door?
Yes.
You're basically entering from the main entrance into the building at the front elevation.
Yeah.
The grocery pickup is very close to the main vestibule area.
Okay.
There is no specific man door that allows a customer entry, you know, near-
The pickup sign itself, other than that overhead door.
Okay.
So, I'm just curious, and I understand the chairman's point. So, if you go look at the proposed front elevation on this rendering right here, I just think it would be a lot, make more sense to have it right to the right of the grocery sign above those, I guess those are simulated four windows right there, I guess that's what that is, or those four windows. So, to the right of the grocery on that facade above those four windows right there, I would think that would just be a better location for it. But this is just a standard location on all the Walmart stores throughout the United States? Is that basically what it is?
Yes, it is typically, because they typically have signs that are larger in nature that inform, you know, their clientele, inform the customers that pick up as a service.
Yeah, I understand the purpose behind it, I get it.
And also, you know, I was thinking the same thing, Chief, I'm thinking you put it next to the thing, but people may think that you pick up your groceries, right? It's too close to the word grocery, and also you're clustering signs together. I understand, I understand the theory behind spreading out the signage, I get it.
Please also bear in mind that the pickup would be for non-grocery items too, so-
So, you want to keep it far away, all right, enough?
Correct.
Yeah, but okay.
But still let them know the service is available.
And I think the confusion is because the sign for pickup is right above something that looks to be a door.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, and that, you know, that would mess me up, honestly.
And that's understood. But with that, with the location of the sign being there, it's far enough away from the other signs that it gives, has its own prominence, if you will, on the front elevation.
Well, I think, Mr. Higgins, what, at least I'm saying, and I think Mr. Seaman is saying, oh, we don't have an objection to the sign or to the location of the sign. What we have, at least personally, is that visual, that that's an entrance right underneath the sign. And what I'm asking is if that visual of that entranceway can be modified, just brick it up like the rest of the facade right around it, all right? Have no problem with the sign being there, all right?
Understood.
That's what we're saying.
Well, what does understood mean? Like, you'll do it?
We could certainly, we could certainly look at, you know, an architectural-
Put a pot with a tree in it, something.
I guess, you know, the one question we're kind of getting at is, there's that doorway facade there, but no doorway. So, I think that's what's creating the imbalance.
I think that's in the visual. When you go there, I've been to this Walmart a million times, when you go there, you know immediately, when you're within about 100 feet-
Right.
That that's not a door.
Yeah.
That's a wall, you know?
Yeah, I think this rendering is a little bit more deceiving than what it actually looks like out there.
True, fair enough.
Yeah, you, any person would know that that's not an entrance.
I can see Rob sitting there trying to open the, knocking on the brick wall.
I'm worried about my wife, not me.
No, it's obvious, I mean-
Yeah, no, of course, of course.
Guys, we want to, obviously, before you, in our sense of what your concerns are, I just want to bring up to the attention of the board that this is a policy or proposal that is for Walmart's nationwide achievement.
Yeah, I get it.
So, this is not unique, and we really don't have much flexibility from corporate in terms of, obviously-
Well, counsel, can I just say, that's not a planning argument, though, I mean-
I understand, I'm just making the point because it would be-
Yeah, I'm sure Christine has a much better reason why it needs to be there.
I'm sure she does, I'm sure she does. I'm just confirming what the chief is saying.
I get it.
Counsel, I have another question also. On page three of our packet here, the ballards in the proposed rendering are missing. And I, Mr., our former chairman, Paul Snyder's not here to point that out, so I'm doing it for him. Are those ballards going to be there? Are you removing the ballards? You're not removing, you're not moving-
No, we are not proposing removing any ballards.
Okay, that's all, I just wanted to put that on the record, because the rendering was missing ballards, that's why.
Are you proposing the color change? Because some of the renderings have a gray tone to them, are you?
I'm sorry, could you speak into the mic?
Mr. Higgins, are you changing the color of the building as well?
Right now, no, there's no proposal, there's no indication that the colors are going to be changed at this time, my understanding is that-
Okay. Board, have any other questions?
Nothing further.
I'm sorry, counsel, was Mr. Higgins complete with his presentation, or is there more?
Go ahead.
I think he has one more exhibit that he'd like to show you, but if you have no further questions, we can move on to our floor for the sake of time, so.
Well, it's not for the sake of time, it's just if they believe they've heard enough. We're not trying, we're not trying to rush you out, I don't want the record to reflect that.
I'm not trying to, counselor, I'm just, whatever the board wants, if the board feels it has enough information from this-
He's got more testimony he wants to provide? By all means.
Actually, there is a proposal for color changes on the building, okay? According to this rendering here. This is their new direction in terms of Walmart's colors, and so the existing versus the proposed would show new color scheme for the Walmart.
Okay.
I guess, Ron, the reason I'm asking the question is, just want to make sure the record is clear. How much does the record have to be clear? Because there is-
Well, the record should always be clear.
Well, if you go, it's a lot, by the renderings, it looks like there's a lot more that's going on than just signs. Where the Walmart, the new Walmart sign is going, it looks like they're changing the inlay in the brick facade, and even maybe changing, by the rendering, it looks like it's a different type of brick facade in the front. There's additional architectural elements that look like are going to be going in over the home and garden, I'm sorry, the home, home and pharmacy area and the grocery area, the facade behind it. If you look at the proposed right elevation, it looks like they're adding some nice wrought iron something, but I don't know what was there before there, and if that's safe for garbage and refuge, and now the garbage and refuge is going to be seen through the wrought iron fencing. There seems to be a bunch of other stuff that's happening here, and I want to try to make sure the record is clear as to what the board is approving in the rendering.
Well, the board approves what it's been asked to approve.
Okay.
So, if it approves anything. And we've only been asked to grant relief for signage. Actually, I think it's a minor site plan with relief for signage. So, I guess as part of the minor site plan, you would be approving, you know, any architectural modifications you see. But the question is, do any of those modifications trigger any kind of relief? I don't think, Peter, you did not pick up any relief that's necessary with regard to any of the other modifications that are here, did you?
We did not, and we reviewed the previous resolution.
Just in case you didn't hear, we did not, and we reviewed the prior resolution. And I don't think the engineering report picked up anything new other than the signage in terms of relief, did it?
No, it was only the signage.
Okay. So, I think, you know, in terms of just being thorough, perhaps, you know, you need to address that it's not just signage that's changing out there.
Our application is just for signage.
That's not, I know, I know what your application is for. But I think, you know, in terms, what Mr. Tannenhouse is saying is there are other things going on here, and just for purposes of us being clear, because you do need variance relief, and it may go towards the positive criteria that you're also changing some of the architectural elements here, it may be more accommodating, you know, to a sign, it may help promote the municipal land use law in a way that, you know, the old design did not. So, I think understanding, you know, the overall changes that you're making is probably necessary. So, maybe just, you know, in terms of the photo or the renderings that you've given us, you know, maybe starting in reverse, in that pickup area where it does look like, you know, there's like a recessed wall now where there wasn't, you know, run us through what's different in that regard.
Did you understand the question?
Yeah, could you repeat your question one more time, I'm not bothered.
I'm not going to repeat the whole thing, but what's different in terms of not just signage, but the architecture generally in those areas?
Well, we're not really proposing any kind of changes.
All right, let me, let me help you. So, let's start, like I said, in reverse. You see where the pickup sign is?
I do.
That wall doesn't look the same in the proposed as it does in the existing, right? Doesn't look like a flat wall in the existing, doesn't look like a flat wall anymore?
Okay, yes, I do see that.
So, what's the change?
Well, it's basically same, again, the rendering depicts that as being a little bit of a lighter colored material, but the material itself is not changing.
Well, I'm not talking about the material, the wall no longer looks flat, right?
Yeah, I think-
And you've even put like a little shadow under what looks like, you know-
Underneath the cornice.
Yeah.
Underneath the cornice in there.
Yes. So, talk to me, or talk to the board and the public about what's different from this flat, you know, banal wall to this new wall.
Well, I think that the rendering probably does not delineate the existing cornice the way it exists on the building, but there would be no proposed change as far as the cornice is concerned.
So, that's just, there's a cornice existing? Because that really doesn't show.
Well, if you look at the existing blank wall where the new pickup is located, you know, there's what appears to be like a cornice in parapic condition there. The rendering for the new pickup sign does not really delineate that same type of cornice detail. We're not proposing to change that with the pickup sign. We're not suggesting that that cornice is going to change in any way, shape, or form.
So, this is more an optical illusion between the two that you-
It's the rendering that doesn't truly indicate the actual existing profile of the existing cornice and parapic condition.
So, the existing blank wall is not the existing blank wall, there's an actual corner? I'm just getting at, you've provided this, an existing and a proposed, and they look different, and you're saying that one of them is not accurate.
Does it sound like-
Counselor, I don't think that's what the testimony is.
Does it sound like we just provided for the signs and the facade changes?
Well, you tell me then, counsel, I got two pictures that don't look the same.
Yeah, I mean, we went through an extensive amount of color selection when we did the, what have we approved just north of here?
Autozone.
The autozone, all right? I mean, that, we went through an extensive about the fact that we want a color variation. Now, I'm a little bit color challenged, all right? But it seems to me like we're taking a lot of color and making it grays or very muted tones. And I don't know if that's something that the board wants, desires.
Well, I think the issue with autozone was, it was too bright. I think we were advocating or suggesting that they toned it down a little bit, and I think that there, that was, that's how I took autozone.
I'm just, I'm just trying to say that they had extensive testimony until we settled upon the colors, all right?
Right.
And, you know, thank you, Mr. Tannenhouse, for bringing this to the forefront, but it goes beyond what the applicant is-
I just see a lot of color changes and it looks like a lot of architectural elements, and I assume this was just a sign application. So, I really didn't pay attention to those and didn't really put a lot of thought into it. I have to apologize, but I'm just not prepared today to review those items, if that is stuff that the board has an ability to opine on.
I mean, yeah, counsel-
If this is, if this is just a maintenance item and a maintenance issue, and it's just part of what a client could, or someone who owns property and how it could just do under a maintenance program, and we have no jurisdiction on this, then that's a different story.
And counsel, hold on, the more I look at these pictures, the existing and the proposed, I mean, the more, you know, differences I see, like, for instance, on the, on page three, the existing blank wall on the bottom has a sign, or I guess a number on it, 4900, and the proposed is not. I mean, there's little things like that that's beyond what I expected to discuss tonight, you know? Not only, I mean, not only the things, Brian, I mean, we can go on, I'm sure there's a lot of, a lot of stuff here, actually. The more I look at it, again, the more stuff I'm finding.
Our application here, just to be clear, it's just on the sign. If the board is not here to vote on the aesthetics or the other renderings that are depicted, we're not here for approval on that. We're just here, we provide it-
Right, right.
Just so you can see what this door, you know-
And if you, listen, you just put that on the record, I'm okay with that. You certified to that, I'm perfectly fine with that.
So, I'm just curious about one thing. Ron, does Walmart have the ability, putting the signs aside, to simply come in and decide they wanted to change the colors of the facade and apply for a permit?
I don't, yeah, I'd have to, I'm sorry. I'd have to look back at the resolution. I don't know that the resolution, you know, I remember the iconic tree out of the resolution, that was a big deal. But I don't remember the color scheme. Do we have the old resolution here?
I don't know.
Is the board ready to just discuss the signage?
Well, I just have one question, though, with regard to the number of signs as I'm looking at this. Is there a separate McDonald's sign back there that I see?
Looks like it's existing and it's really-
Well, but that would go to the number of signs, though. That's a separate sign, isn't it? Or does that count as a sign, the McDonald's emblem?
It's definitely existing now.
It's a logo, I mean, I would say so, it's a letter, and it's certainly a sign.
So, then, did you account for that in the number of signs you were talking about, or no?
It was not part of the calculation.
All right.
And again, the, yeah, those, the sign calculations were strictly for the, those signs that, you know, for the location of the values of-
I think you can go on, but I think, Peter, maybe, if, do you have the ordinance? You may want to just look up what a sign is, see if this qualifies, because I think you may have seven signs, if that's the case. And I don't know if that's a big deal or not, but, you know, just to be thorough. But, you know, just to your point overall, Mr. Chairman, like, an applicant doesn't get to determine, you know, we are only coming in for this, this is the only thing you're permitted to look at, if they're doing a bunch of other stuff that impacts the, you know, the determination for variances. So, I would think that, you know, you're asking to increase the number of signs here, the attractiveness of the architecture is part of what's relevant for the board to understand. So, you can't say, we've only applied for six signs, you are prohibited from looking at anything else.
Ron, can we do this piecemeal, or no? Can they come back? Can we do the signs today and they come back for any other changes proposed on these renderings?
So, you- So you mean, like, two approvals?
Yeah, could we, yeah, could we do the first, so could we approve the signs today if we want to? And then they can come back for any other additional, uh, changes that we're finding?
I think they probably need to do, I think it all works together. But I don't know that you need a, a, a new plan or anything. I mean, just some representations on the record to, to reconcile what's different from the existing to the proposed, I think would probably be, you know, no.
Um, Councilor, do you have someone from Walmart who will testify to exactly what is the intent here?
We have an engineer who's prepared to testify as to, he's, he's not a Walmart employee, but he does work with Walmart, and he would be able to answer those questions, I believe.
Yeah.
But with regard to, you know, what we're asking, we're asking for approval for the signs, and we're not asking for approval of, you know, architectural designs in Walmart. That's simply what our application is.
Counselor, I think I have to...
You don't get to narrow it like that, though.
Yeah, I have to, I...
Counselor, with all due respect, I think you're, you're going above and beyond the role of the board attorney here. I believe the board...
Counselor, Counselor, if I could...
Really? Can you cite me a case? Can you cite me a case? Can you cite me a statute? I'd like to know.
Counselor.
I'm not trying to get into disrepute with you, but I'm just trying to say that we're, we have an application...
They've asked for legal advice. Are you to, are you...
With regards to that question, correct, but I, I think...
Are you to say to me that I cannot, well, why don't you explain to me what my role is here?
I don't, I'm not here to get into disrepute, because I think it's the board's...
You've told me I've acted inappropriately beyond the scope of my, my job here.
I think a lot of the questioning and a lot of your inferences are today...
What inferences? What inferences have I made?
With regards to our application.
What inferences?
I don't, I'm not trying to get into disrepute with you.
No, you've just said I've made inferences that are inappropriate. I'd like them on the record.
I believe that the role of the board attorney is to assist the board, not to ask questions and ask...
Really? There's a, I have not, I have given a legal opinion. Are you saying to me that there's a case out there, and there's a statute that says a board attorney is not allowed to ask a question?
Certainly allowed to ask a question.
Uh, let, let me just short circuit this. This board is 100% comfortable with what Ron is doing and the approach that he's taking, all right? So if you have an issue with that, then that's your problem. The board is fully supportive of him, okay? So let's just move on.
Understood.
Okay, so I'll, I'll, I'll bring up this, I don't think your statement of just reviewing the signs can be taken into consideration for the simple fact that your Wal, main Walmart, if you could just leave that up, that up for a second, please. Your main Walnotmart sign is making a major change to the front facade of that area of the building. You are no longer just replacing the lettering of the sign to a different font style, you're actually adding a very large blue, what looks like recessed element to that existing front facade, which is make, providing a major change to your major logo and, and trademark for your building. So I, I, I'm having a tough time just looking at the sign without also incorporating all of the other architectural elements that appear to be being done within this, this elevation.
Brian, if you look on that, on that rendering where it shows the whole existing front and the side, you'll see that that blue is a 3M film that's applied directly to the outside panels.
I don't know what it is, but either way, it's a major...
I'm just telling you what it says on here.
Yeah, but I mean, you, there's, there's a color chart here.
Oh, you're right, it is saying 3M.
There's, there's a color chart, so there's clearly an intent to change the colors.
So, so, so there's, there's a lot more going on to that facade, and it doesn't sound like you are prepared to talk about the rest of the facade changes. We're here, we're, we're willing to listen if you want to take a couple of minutes and regroup and, and figure out how you want to provide your testimony on all of the facade changes that you're proposing, we're happy to hear it. It's up to you. You want to take five minutes?
I think that would be, I'd appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you, and I appreciate it, if the board chairman would allow...
Yeah, we'll take a five-minute recess to allow you to, to strategize.
Thank you.
I'd like to reconvene this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we've spoke amongst ourselves, and we, um, we have some more information that we think would be helpful for the board with regard to our application. I have a witness who I'd like to call, I referred to him earlier, his name is Greg DeBona from Bowler Engineering. He's a landscape architect who would be able, I think, to provide some more information and clarification to assist the board in its decision, if that would be okay.
Uh, he's your witness?
Okay.
You're gonna qualify him for...
I will.
Landscape architecture, correct?
Do you swear or affirm the test...
Correct.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name with the record.
Sure, it's Gregory DeBona, last name D.I.B.O.N.A., and I'm a former juror at a 305 Fellowship Building in Mount Laurel, New Jersey, under the name of Bowler Engineering.
Okay, Counselor, would you like to qualify him?
Thank you. Mr. DeBona, can you give the board the benefit of your education and professional background, please?
Absolutely, yeah. So I, I received my Bachelor of Science in Landscape Architecture from Upris University back in 2006, became a licensed landscape architect, well, I say licensed landscape architect in 2011. My license is still active and outstanding, active in New Jersey. And I've worked on several Walmart applications all throughout the state of New Jersey and almost every Walmart that's been designed and constructed in New Jersey over the past 10 years.
All right, we'll accept his qualifications in the area of landscape architecture.
Thank you. Mr. DeBona, um, you've heard the testimony today and the board's questions with regard to, specifically with regard to not only the signs, but also the depictions. So I was wondering whether you could possibly provide us with some more information as to the depictions and what exactly we are intending with regard to this site.
Sure, and I, I'd like to refer back, I'll stand up if the podium, if that's okay.
Sure.
I'll refer back to A4, and this is that colorized elevation that was presented.
But that was not prepared under your direction?
No, that's correct. I'm just gonna refer to it as I'm talking. Uh, the, the plans that were prepared under my direction were the civil drawings produced by Bowler, which just simply delineated where the, the signs were changing, and, and that changed in square footage. So I want to correct a couple of things, because I know we were talking, and there's some testimony that was back and forth. The board members had correctly identified that not only are we asking for signage changes here, but we are asking for color changes in the palette of the building. The, the colors that you see on these elevations is the new Walmart branding that's happening at all their stores. Uh, it is happening across New Jersey, and it's part of the renovation as, as well as including the pickup store signage. So with, with the testimony that's already been provided regarding the number of signs, the square footage of signs, the locations of signs, that's all, that's all correct and correctly depicted on this, on these elevations. What we did not discuss previously was that there's also color changes. There is no material change in the sense that the bricks, the columns, the awnings, the ephes, the features that are built into the building elevations today, those are all staying, uh, and no, nothing additional is being added. What is being changed, though, is the color. The, the tan and taupe is now really being changed to a charcoal and a light gray. The charcoal and gray is something that, again, has been national branding at all their stores, it's part of their, their, their new proto rollout. It does also include that blue band that you noted behind the Walmart white lettering. That was, that is a change. So that, the way that the sign depicts with the, the blue background, that is what it would look like. And to the discussion that we were having before about whether something was existing or proposed, I think I can clarify why that was so misleading. On the colored elevations, um, I don't know if we've presented that board yet or not.
No, you haven't.
Can we pull that up? Thank you. Jim, do you know, was this submitted as part of the application, or is this something in addition?
Uh, that was part of the application.
We have that.
Okay. So I, do I need to mark this?
No, it's...
No, it's, yeah.
Okay. So these are the colored elevations. These pictures, even though they, they're called out as existing conditions, those are actually a computer-generated rendering of the existing building. It's not a real picture of the building, even though it looks really, really close to the same colors and materials and everything that's out there. So when we were saying before about, oh, it's, it's not exactly the same as what's there today, it's because that, that's a rendered representation. The, so again, what I'm trying to just emphasize is that the, the differentials and materials across the front of the, the building will be the same in terms of the structures and the canopy and the areas that we have the, what we call the bump outs, and there was some question about whether the wall stays flat or isn't flat anymore. That's the same, it's just about a matter of colors. There was also some discussion earlier that I was listening, sitting in the back there, about the confusion that is being created by putting our pickup sign directly over what looks almost like a loading space. As, again, another very good point. This, this style of architecture along the front i- is really Walmart's older proto that has these different column lines, and, and it's intended to break up the building so it doesn't look like a, a long box. But to put the proto parking, or the pickup on the corner is really important to them. It's part of their branding, it's consistent like that on every building, it's always on the far right or the far left, depending on which side the grocery lines up on. However, uh, you know, based on the testimony and, and the questions that were, that came from the, the members, I think it makes sense that, I'm sure we can agree to change that and backfill that now with more brick so that there isn't that confusion, so that this doesn't get confused as a door. Again, the intent, um, what happens during the, the operations of pickup is that the inside of the building has a lot of components to it, that takes up a, a whole team of new personnel that has to stage and prep the material ahead of time so that when the customer comes during their allotted time for pickup, it's already ready to go. And that takes up a good section of the corner of the building. So you can't even put a door there, because it would impact the interaction of the, uh, the staging and the setup that the employees have inside the building. But the intent is, you don't want them to come in on the, the far left side of the building and then having to walk a couple hundred feet to pick up their stuff, and then walk out the exit. So that's the whole reason why you always want it on that closest corner, with the understanding you still have to go through the closest main vestibule, so...
So if we're doing all these facade changes, then has, do you guys have any testimony on whether there was anything in the original resolutions of how we got to this facade that prevents you from making these radical changes?
I, I do not. I do not, um, know if there was something specific in the old resolution.
I unfortunately wasn't on that board, I don't know what, I'm sure there was discussions on, I mean, because they came up with a very nice-looking Walmart, much better than what it was when it first was there. So I'm sure there was some interaction with the board, there was some discussions, there may have been something in the resolution.
Well, they made the same point back then as they do now, it's national branding.
Well, can we ask, Mr., Mr. Kachara, you have the resolution there?
It's a 30-page, um, resolu, or more than that. It's a 34-page resolution, so I'd have to go through it. Because we, the board did go through a lot of this in, in great detail. Like I said, my greatest memory was the tree situation on, on the property and making sure that, you know, trees...
The iconic tree.
Were, right, the iconic tree.
Yeah.
And making sure that that was appropriately handled. I mean, we did grant, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, relief from, looks like 19 sections of our ordinance, you know, to help, you know, facilitate the, uh, the project. So there was a lot of, you know, there's a lot of testimony in support of that, and the board did, you know, go into some great detail. Mr. Tantillo was the, was the board chairman back then at that time.
Yeah. I can provide you, based on my experience in, in working on a number of these projects over the years, in terms of what was proto on this elevation, and then what has changed.
It doesn't matter, I'm, I'm, I'm just concerned, because I wasn't the board member at the time, and I haven't had a chance to review the resolution of when that facade came through, and I have a concern that we may be undoing something that that previous board had concluded, and it's part of the resolution. And, and it need, it hasn't been addressed, and it doesn't sound like you guys have, have reviewed that original resolution.
We have, and actually, um, to your point, we did submit it as part of our application, and if the board is, sees favorably upon our application tonight, we would make it a condition of approval that we would continue to comply with the prior resolution with regard to, to any concerns that you do have.
I, I don't know about the other board members, I'm not really comfortable with that.
I wouldn't feel comfortable. I, I want to make an informed decision. I know it sounds silly, and you think you're...
So one of the sections that they required relief from was Section 188-230D, says, "No wall shall have a blank uninterrupted length exceeding 50 feet without including a revealed pilaster change in texture, color, or material, change in plane, window, lattice, or equivalent element." So they did get relief, so there must, I, I'd have to look further into the resolution, but, you know, there had to have been discussions about, you know, the color and the architectural elements because of that.
And this, this is exactly what we did with the autozone, and, and we spent two meetings just going over the facade of that. Can I, can I just ask you a question, based upon what, what you just represented? Going back to this Walmart sign with, what is that, a blue color?
Yes.
All right?
Yeah.
You represent on Exhibit A5 that the existing five-foot, six-inch Walmart ID sign, is 298 square feet, and then right below that, you say it's, um, the same for the new sign. Does that include this wide blue band, or is that just the...
No. The way this sign's measured is from the outer limits of the lettering, including the size of the spark, which is the, the yellow emblem at the end of the Wal, word Walmart. The blue panel is not included in that square footage.
Is the blue panel part of the signage? The requirement for the sign?
Requirement for the sign? Well, we, we, that, that blue is usually like, it's more of a, a color treatment than like an actual signage emblem.
Paint, right? It's paint.
Yeah.
It's a film.
It's a 3M film.
It's a 3M film.
I think, as a point of clarification, it looks like on the newer renderings, there's at least two new doors. I'm not sure, I mean, you know, Mr. Tannenhouse had mentioned a couple of exterior changes as well, um, specifically like the wrought iron versus what's there now.
Yeah.
Just curious if that's, you know...
I cannot speak to those doors.
Actually, I think it's three doors.
I don't know what's happening with those doors.
Actually, it looks like it's three new doors.
So, just summarizing now, you're now representing that in addition to the signage, there's physical color changes to the facade. However...
That's correct.
You're not changing any of the bump outs, the, the depth of the bump outs, it's just simply a treatment that's being put on it.
That's right, they're repainting the brick.
Is there any other things being added or removed from the facade as part of this?
I don't think that, um, Mr. DeBona is qualified to make that. I think that'd be, Mr. Higgins would have to make that.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just looking through the resolution again on page 12, paragraph 31, there was testimony with regard to Section 188-230D, which provides that "no wall shall have a blank uninterrupted length exceeding 50 feet without including a change in texture, color, or material." To go back to see which witness this was, it says, he stated that the applicant is using different color bands to help break up the wall. He also stated that different projections and articulations were also being used. So they did talk about the architecture and the context of the relief they were seeking, and the colors from the relief they were seeking. That, that was Mr. Hurley who testified at the prior hearing to that.
Okay. Well, I, I don't know about the board here, but, um, I'm hearing that we're gonna need to have some detailed testimony put on the record. to have some detailed testimony put on the record as to, it sounds like we granted you variance from the ordinance on the original application. We're going to need to understand if this new facade treatment requires a variance from the ordinance.
Okay.
You'll have to have that testimony put on record.
Could we carry the application to the next meeting to provide that testimony and that evidence?
Absolutely.
Is that all right? Okay.
Just be sure there's already three applications on that same night.
Okay. And what night is it?
July 19.
Okay.
Or you'd rather August.
Eileen, what other?
I think August 2nd is a better night for that.
August 2nd.
Okay.
Is that acceptable to your, are you all available?
No, I can't. Well, Captain, you know, once you get all worked out.
Okay.
Yes, counsel?
If it's okay with the board, I'll work with the zoning officer and board secretary to come up with a date that would work.
Well, if we don't carry it to a date specific tonight, then you have to renotice.
Okay.
So even if we carry it to a date and it's not a good date, then you don't have to renotice, and we can just carry it again if you want. So we can carry, just as a placeholder, the second, so you don't have to renotice.
Okay, that works. Thank you very much.
I'll just, I need an extension of time on the record, please.
Absolutely, we certainly grant you an extension of time and appreciate the board's time and willingness to allow us to come back.
So case number SP 941A for Walmart Real Estate Business Trust, we carry it to the boards.
August 2nd.
August 2nd, 2018 meeting, beginning at 7:00 here in the council chambers at Town Hall, that we no further notice the property owners, and all records, documents, and exhibits are on file in the zoning office during normal business hours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good day.
Okay, Mr. Russo, missed the planned status report?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman. We didn't meet since we last spoke, so.
Okay.
We're waiting to hear back from the council to, because what we're planning on doing is a circulation element, it's a comprehensive element that involves a lot of moving parts. It's a little bit more than what we did last time, but our other element, this is the beginning of many years of working on this element, so we have been meeting, and we're at the phase now where we just need council approval for funds to see if what we want to do can be done.
Okay. So I would say that we should cancel the next month.
The next meeting, correct.
The, yes. So.
It's this Thursday coming up, a week from today, correct?
A week from today, yes.
Yep.
I'll put a note on the website on the bulletin board on Monday.
Right, thank you, Eileen.
Okay. Mr. Ron?
Yes.
Any reason to go into executive session?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, seeing that, entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned.
Have a good day.